Welcome to the city council meeting, August 20th, 2020. Bishop Holden, we show us all for the prayer.
I sure will. Appreciate it. Father Lord, we thank for this opportunity to once again serve this great city. Blessed, and we dedicate every word to you in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Let me declare. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, before we call roll, what we want to do. County Chief Brad Hips, you come up here, please. Take sixty away from your mask. You take your mask off. It's been almost ninety days since I made you county chief. You have displayed your character. This is county clerk Thursday, and that's the part you serve.
Did the sound go up?
I can't hear nothing.
I can't either.
I can't, I can't hear nothing either. They say I was muted.
The mayor is muted. The mayor in council chambers is muted.
Well, if they're muted, how can we hear what's going on?
Y'all hear now?
No.
We're unmuted. Can y'all hear us?
I hear somebody.
Did you hear me?
Yes.
I read my mic's not on. I turned on mine. So, in case y'all missed what we did.
Well, we did. We missed it.
Okay, I just explained where. I removed the arrow tag from Brad Hips. He has displayed the characteristics and qualities of a good leader, his organizational skills. Also understands his department, works as a team with the rest. As of today, he's no Robert General. He is Chief Hips.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Alright.
Say a word to.
Appreciate it. I appreciate their responsibility that you have given me. I recognize it's a huge responsibility. And I don't take it lightly. For the city and the park, they're both very important to me. So, thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Pro call.
Councilman Deeds.
Mike, are you on?
What?
He's on.
Present.
I saw him earlier.
Yeah. He didn't walk the dog or something.
No, I'm here.
There he is.
I'm here.
Councilmember Holden.
Here.
Councilmember Sansing.
Here.
Councilmember Ray.
Ready.
Councilwoman Mashburn.
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Twitty.
Here.
Councilmember Collins.
Here.
Councilmember Ray.
Ready.
I believe he's on the phone and he was muted.
It's ready. I'm here.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't know. I'm in a meeting. I'm coming there when I get to the meeting.
We have the presentation minted about sixteen minutes, and a brief one minute.
So moved.
Motion say any discussion. Say none, and open the papers. Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye. Motion approve consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Aye.
Alright, now then we'll come up to resolution seven ninety-eight. For the, uh... This is.
Moodish, read resolution seven ninety-eight.
Say it.
Say it. Say it, open the papers. Say aye.
Aye.
And all those... Alright, so read the resolution, please.
Resolution seven ninety-eight. Can you guys hear me? Okay. A resolution to ratify and confirm the issuance and sale of wastewater refunding revenue bonds for the purpose of advanced funding the city's outstanding wastewater refunding revenue bonds. Series twenty sixteen B, ratify and confirm the principal and interest payment schedule for the bonds and the terms and conditions of the sale of the bonds, ratify and confirm the execution and delivery of a bond purchase agreement, and prescribe other matters relating thereto.
Hey, uh, Leah.
Will we adopt the resolution seven ninety-eight?
Very good.
Alright, motion taken. Leah, why don't you explain that what we're doing, this little cleanup here?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Uh, yes, this is simply a confirming resolution. When we met previously, you passed a parameters ordinance. And this resolution just confirms that the bond offering did meet those parameters. And congratulations on a very successful refunding for the wastewater utility.
Great.
Thank you.
Fantastic.
Thank you, Thea.
Okay. Now, we're done with this. It doesn't have to come back before us for at least five years. Okay, the next is, uh, request... Oh, sorry. Are those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Alright, the motion carries. Uh, alright, the next thing we have a request for, uh, for repairing potholes. This is already in the budget this year. And, uh, it's a new kind of technology. So instead of us doing it, we're having an outside company to do it. And, uh, it fixes those places that we can't, we don't have the equipment to fix. We used to have one of these machines, but it broke ten years ago. So this company gonna come in. We will not spend over fifty thousand dollars, but we will spend over twenty. And it's done by number of potholes. Uh, number of tons of the stuff you use. And, uh, it's supposed to last longer and, uh, be better for the stuff. So any questions on, uh, this bid that we opened?
Fix the pothole on my street.
Alright, send me a picture of it, Reedy. I'll take care of it.
Bob, do we have a list of where we are gonna fix the potholes?
Um, a partial. Uh, but it doesn't fix all potholes. The bigger potholes we'll fix. This fixes the ones that, uh, just kinda thin, you know, that we've had trouble keeping fixed. It'll help, it'll help make them better, uh, last long.
So I have a question.
It's in conjunction with a regular pothole fixing.
I have a question, Bob.
Alright.
Are we gonna be able to fix the potholes before we get more potholes this winter?
Yes, yes. We're gonna start right now doing it. Uh, maybe be looking up to fifty potholes.
Now, Mayor, I have a question.
Alright.
I noticed you said, uh, it's a warranty. Is there a warranty? You say it's guarantee of something?
I'm not sure. I guess that's Jimmy. He's not on the phone, of course. But I'm sure they do. They guarantee their work. Their license bonded, and they're a good company.
Okay.
Alright.
Moodish, we accept low bid?
Second.
Only bid.
Yeah, it was only bid, but that's okay. It is the lowest. But, uh, okay, you got a motion. Any more discussion on it? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Okay, and this one's a little different. This is the final plat out of Jackson Terrace. The planning commission is meeting after we meet. So we're gonna approve this if they approve. If they don't, it's a conditional approval that if they approve it, then we will. Then this will go through. If not, then if they don't approve it, then it doesn't matter. Okay, we'll see.
Is there a problem where it may not be approved?
No, no. I think they've worked it all out.
Okay.
I wouldn't go there.
But, I, you know, there's always something that can happen. So, uh, I don't, I don't know. I mean, Mark Strauss here, he's not sure if it's gonna go through or not. But they've done some stuff, Mark, since, uh, you were, they've made some improvements to it. And I don't know, last time you got to look at it, talk to it. They met today.
Okay.
Can I ask what the issues are? I mean, I saw a plaque in our packet.
Well, uh, the problem is they haven't paid the road yet, but it's getting to be paid the money.
There's about, on that item, there's about ten things that have to be ratified, so there are different issues.
Okay, so it may not pass. Uh, Mark Strauss said there's some issues, and I don't know what they are, but they worked that out in the, uh, uh, planning commission. And if it doesn't pass, it does pass. Uh, it doesn't matter what we do here. If they approve it, that's fair. Uh, but we don't, they have some builders that are ready to go, so as soon as we get it through planning commission, they're ready to go, so I don't wanna hold them back. They gotta be planning mission groups. Alright, do I hear motion on, uh, accepting the final plat if approved by the planning commission?
You need a motion?
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve.
Second.
Hey, any more discussion? Okay, then this is contingent up on the, uh, planning commission. So, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Alright, so we're not worried about committees right now. So, uh, how about motion seven, uh, resolution seven ninety-nine? I entertain the motion to read, uh, resolution seven ninety-nine.
Second.
Second.
Motion say, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Resolution seven ninety-nine, uh, resolution... Sorry, Bob. A resolution by the City of Jacksonville to ratify and confirm the land lease option to purchase agreement between the City of Jacksonville and Sig Sauer Incorporated, and authorizing the execution of an additional land lease and option to purchase agreement between the City of Jacksonville and Sig Sauer Incorporated.
Okay, thank you. Y'all wanna discuss it, or you wanna put a motion to approve it or not?
Moodish, we adopt.
Okay. Alright, so Sig Sauer has two lease purchase options, tracks A and B out the road right now. They're looking at doing a major expansion, and they want to buy the land behind track B, I believe. That's about fifteen point something acres. At the same price, they're gonna be purchasing the other ones for us. So it's a lease purchase office for their expansion. Uh, they expand, they're looking at two hundred and twenty jobs.
How many?
Two hundred and twenty.
Alright, okay.
Hey, it's fully running, then, uh... So, uh, there, we're working on those details. It'll probably be a hundred and fifty million dollar building they're gonna put up, so, uh, we're, uh, we're working on those details right now.
Does that mean they're expanding their business?
Yes, yes.
Oh, great.
They're about double the size of their workforce, and a lot of it's gonna be a distribution service stuff.
Oh, wow, okay.
They're gonna distribute, uh, you know, to the west and, and south from there. And so they'll kinda have that Sig Sauer drive, they're gonna have all the land on both sides, that, all of that railroad tracks. Uh, they're also building a machine gun range, yeah, all kinds of things you're doing out there.
They're getting out of the hospital to fire up that war.
Yes, they're coming out here for her. We're gun friendly. Alright, so any more discussion on this resolution motion? Just so that I can enter into that agreement. Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Alright, that motion, that resolution is carried. Alright, so now we're dealing with, uh... This ordinance sixteen thirty-eight. I'd entertain a motion to, uh, place ordinance sixteen thirty-eight on first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Alright, in motion, second. Pro call.
Councilmember Deeds.
Aye, yeah.
Councilmember Holden.
Aye.
Councilmember Sansing.
Aye.
Councilmember Ray.
Aye.
Councilmember Mashburn.
Aye.
Councilmember Trailer.
Aye.
Councilmember Twitty.
Aye.
Councilmember Collins.
Aye.
Ordinance number sixteen thirty-eight, an ordinance amending Jacksonville Municipal Code fifteen oh four to provide modification of the city's flood damage prevention program, amending Jacksonville Municipal Code fifteen twelve oh three oh, amending Jacksonville Municipal Code fifteen twelve oh four oh, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
Yeah, thank you. I entertain a motion approved on first reading, put on second reading.
So moved.
Alright, so Jimmy was supposed to be on the phone helping with this, but this is a housekeeping thing, it's kinda something we're forced to do. That's just accepting their plan and all that to, uh, uh, help on flooding.
Accepting whose plan?
It's what, accepting, you said accepting their plan? Well, it's, it's the program, it's the plan that we have that they approved. I guess they not approved, they were fully approved.
Uh, sir, can you hear me?
Okay, Jimmy, good.
Yes, hey, what we got, um, on this ordinance, we found some clerical errors. Um, Jay Whisker, back in twenty fifteen, spoke about this ordinance that we had. And, uh, it's supposed to be the BFE, it's supposed to be two foot above, um, the BFE, when you do a foundation. And it actually came out in ordinance one foot. Somehow, we got a bad typo in there or something. So what it is to clean that ordinance up, it's supposed to read two foot, your base floor elevation, it's supposed to be two foot above the BFE. And, uh, when you, you know, your finished floor of your house, for instance. And in the, in the ordinance, read one foot for some reason. Did you understand any of that?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
If the people that's already used this ordinance at the one foot or one inch, are they gonna get in trouble because they did it wrong?
No, ma'am. We've been telling them two foot.
Okay.
So, but we, we researching and found this error in our ordinance. So, uh, you know, it's just, it's just housecleaning things. Yeah, yeah, we've been using the two foot. But, uh, no, it won't be an issue with them. It will not. It's cleaning up that ordinance. There's some reason it got, I don't know what happened. I can't answer what happened three years ago, four years ago.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Any other questions?
What is substantial improvement?
What's a substantial improvement?
Uh, uh, normally speaking, it's over fifty percent of, uh, you bring stuff up to the day standard, fifty percent of the, uh, uh, cost of the dwelling. Uh, you won't find that except for new, new construction. Okay?
So if I have a house, Jimmy, and I wanna add on to it, now she don't wanna add on to it, and the house isn't two foot above, do I have to raid the entire house?
And the house isn't two foot above, but you're preaching to the gaster raise the old part.
Um, good question. Probably not. Your mortgage count, that's where you get into it. No, probably not. Uh, if you're doing a room addition, we don't ask for a, uh... If you're built in a flood plain, or if your house was built in a flood plain, there could be some questions about it. Um, and it's, it's only, it's only gonna affect the people in the flood plain.
Right.
Think, I think it would, Jimmy and Mike, I think it, this is Mike Deets. I think it would only affect new constructions, the new part that they were adding on to would have to be above the two foot flood elevation. And what that does, their insurance is based on the elevation that's above the flood plain. And it's got so expensive if you're, you know, under a foot. So, um, this just would make sure that all new construction and any additions added would have to be above two foot.
But if you're not, if I, okay, maybe I misunderstood something. So, if you're not here in a flood plain, it doesn't apply. If you're what?
Correct.
No, no, yes, sir. That's right.
That is correct, yes.
Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you, Mike.
Yes, sir.
Pro call.
Councilmember Deeds.
Aye.
Councilmember Holden.
Aye.
Councilmember Sansing.
Aye.
Councilmember Ray.
Aye.
Councilmember Mashburn.
Aye.
Councilmember Trailer.
Aye.
Councilmember Twitty.
Aye.
Councilmember Collins.
Aye. Okay, I entertain a motion approved on second, put on third, file reading.
So moved.
Second.
Alright, any discussion? Pro call.
Councilmember Deeds.
Aye.
Councilmember Holden.
Aye.
Councilmember Sansing.
Aye.
Councilmember Ray.
Aye.
Councilmember Mashburn.
Aye.
Councilmember Trailer.
Aye.
Councilmember Twitty.
Aye.
Councilmember Collins.
Aye. Okay, I would entertain a motion to, uh, approve it or not, uh, sixteen thirty-eight.
So moved.
Second.
Alright, motion second. Any further discussion? Pro call.
Councilmember Deeds.
Aye.
Councilmember Holden.
Aye.
Councilmember Sansing.
Aye.
Councilmember Ray.
Aye.
Councilmember Mashburn.
Aye.
Councilmember Trailer.
Aye.
Councilmember Twitty.
Aye.
Councilmember Collins.
Aye. Good. I adjourned motion to, uh, approve the Jackson Mercy.
So moved. Very good.
Hey, any discussion? Pro call.
Councilmember Deeds.
Aye.
Councilmember Holden.
Aye.
Councilmember Sansing.
Aye.
Councilmember Ray.
Aye.
Councilmember Mashburn.
Aye.
Councilmember Trailer.
Aye.
Councilmember Twitty.
Aye.
Councilmember Collins.
Aye. We have, uh, one appointment, but actually two appointments and, uh, one reappointment. So, Parks and Recreation, uh, reappointing boundary for term, just enter five, eleven, twenty-one.
So moved with your apartment.
Second. Alright, got motion to second. No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Alright, other facilities board, pointy Stephen Pelosi to fill the unexpired term of Mike Deeds, uh, to expire ten, twenty-four, twenty-one.
So moved with your apartment. Very good.
Thank you.
Motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Okay, so the National Housing Department, uh, pointy Mr., uh, David O'Dell, to fill the unexpired term of Mike Deeds. So moved to expire three seventeen twenty-one.
Very good.
I'm in the motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. And just for y'all knowledge, uh, because, uh, Councilmember Sykes was my appointee to the planning commission. Uh, Councilmember Deeds will now be the Councilmember Pointy to the planning commission.
Yay, Mike.
Alright, you have a motion second. I was just gonna try to walk you Mike. They have a motion to have a second.
Make a my second.
Alright, that's second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. You're gonna be a good addition there. You've already been good help to us tonight.
Yes, absolutely.
Alright, any further business y'all have for this council?
Yes, Mayor, I need to say something to the council.
Okay.
You know, we had a problem at the Jacksonville Towers, and I like to thank the, uh, first responders from the city who went down there and helped these, the applicants to go to move to the hotel, and we're gonna need some help trying to get them back. Thank you very much.
Yeah, that...
Thank you, Reedy.
Echo those thoughts, because my folks can bring it off the mall on it, but, uh, I saw Sergeant Childers that boarded right after it had happened. And it took them till about eight o'clock to get everybody up there, but they still had, and they, uh, animal shelter on their body, got the rest of the pets. They were over there, and, uh, they've been, they let people in to clean out the refrigerators and different things, uh, seven members that came and helped. So, uh, they had hired all duty police officers to be there for security around the block. So, uh, uh, great job to fire and place the bar. Yes, left.
Caleb McDonald, uh, has circulated a petition for Puritan Road to, uh, have speed bumps and so effectively do, Mr., uh, he'll be, he'll be, uh, said it works here.
And did y'all hear, everybody hear that?
No, I didn't.
Caleb McDonald got collecting signatures on Puritan Road to get a speed round. And what, what the plan is, if they'll buy the material, we'll put it in. And it's a three-part, it's a three-part deal. So, uh, but you have to have, how many percent of signatures you got to have there? Eighty-five?
It's very high. He's gotten all but one.
He's got all but one. So, uh, and so for those that are looking on how do I get a speed up on my street, get your neighbors to sign, we're, we're trying to find a good price on them right now, so.
Did they get this, I thought it was, uh, we couldn't have speed bumps here in town because of the first responders.
Well, these are a special, they're more of a hump than a bump. They, they, they meet the qualifications that, uh, Howard would have, and Jimmy for the garbage truck. They're, they're not very hot.
Bob, where do you think this one would be at?
Puritan.
Puritan?
Uh, Jackson Terrace.
Okay.
Uh, the first thing you have to do is we're figuring, you know, the, the, how fast you go. And, uh, you know, getting the data. If there's not enough speeders on that road, then it won't generate, uh, the ability to have that. So, they're, they're gonna do the, uh, you collect the data first, uh, before we do anything else. Collect the signatures, collect the data, and we're putting it out there.
Well, uh, let me bring your attention, in the Stonewall area, we've already got the data back. Jimmy gave it to me, uh, this week. Uh, we got the petitions, we're getting ready to get started, uh, next week to start getting signatures for the speed bumps on Stonewall.
Okay. And, you know, you're lucky you have an association that can purchase those.
Yeah, it, it, it's a privilege and it's an honor.
Oh, yeah. You love painting, because you use that spoonful all the time. Anything else that you've got?
No, go ahead.
Alright, then, uh, Chief Hips, you have a board. Councilmember, uh, nothing, I entertain a motion to a jerk.
So moved, let's go home.
Thank you.
Yeah, y'all go home. We're jerking.
Y'all have a good one.
Thank you.
Hi, y'all.
Aye.
Good luck.
Yeah. Alright. Yeah. Yeah, I had others. Alright.
I'll see you tomorrow, I'm sure.
Alright.
There is not a homeowner.
Okay, okay.
How are you, Stephanie? Oh, you got off, okay.
I'm doing good, how are you?
Okay. Haven't seen you in a while. I'm trying to get...
Yeah, sorry, I forgot I was on mute.
I'm trying to get that cell phone.
You're trying to get what?
The cell phone number.
Hang on, I'm hearing a bunch of other people.
Okay. I'll call, I'll call you tomorrow.
I just have to email you. I can't hear you very well.
I'll call you tomorrow.
Okay. Okay, sounds good.
Yeah, that's the one you got, I think.
Oh, so you just called a Chicago number, right? Wow.
Okay, you gotta push star six to unmute.
And you push star, and you push star six to unmute.
And you mute with your phone.
And you mute with the star.
With, on your phone where it says mute, you just hit...
Oh, you mute with the mute button.
On your phone, but you, uh, star, star six unmutes you into the meeting, and then you mute yourself, and then on.
Okay, man. Alright, I'll see you in a little bit. Alright. What time's starting? There's any...
Blair? Hey, Blair? You can take my tape off. Thank you. See you later.
Sounds good.
Alright.
Alright, we have, uh, I don't see any. William Montgomery's one. We have, um, where's the one? Oh, yeah, William's on there, just saying. Yeah, Williams on there, what about Rick? Just the five, one, four, five, four, four nine, two. See two real per phone. This, um, what do we need to have? One, we don't have. Here, Brown. And, we will, um, okay, and so we have, um, did we maintain Gary Sykes on here, so does that mean, uh, Mike Deeds is on there? Plan commission, that's the, I was saying. Because all the council figures are coming to the plan commission, yeah, so now it's the plan commission's trying to ask one of its members, so, um, we're around. Not to sing, please. We may not have one. Um, I don't think there's, there won't be any way, we just, we would have, uh, William Montgomery and, uh, and you, and, uh, but I'm not on it, I'm just. Well, it's just that. You know, it's a shame too, because it's pretty open issue. Yeah, you, you look, you're straight forward. I mean, it's, it's very stressful. Say, believe me, I'm not obtaining. And, yeah. Oh, there, okay, uh, Mr. Rupel's on, so there's two. Your, your buddy's gonna have to come. Okay. Let's just go on to. Alright. Okay, good to see, uh, Mr. Bolden, Mr. Montgomery here today, um, we're gonna open the, uh, Board of Adjustment meeting, and, um, my name's, uh, Chairman Stroud, I'm from the planning commission, I'm stepping in for, uh, Chairman Brown, I want to thank you everybody for attending, um, so, at this time, see we have, yeah, two members plus me, so that'll be three, we'll call that a form. Um, and the, uh, William, uh, and, uh, Mr. Rupel, have you guys been able to read the minutes of last meeting, are there any, um, additions or corrections that need to be made to the minutes from last meeting?
No, sir, it looked all good to me.
Okay. Alright, I'd entertain a motion to approve, or the minutes have, um, submitted.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from the July sixteenth meeting.
About a second.
William?
It's English, oh, now it shows on mute, you're, you're unmuted, you can go now.
Why is Williams not unmuted?
No, it, it is unmuted, that's the, uh, it shows unmuted here.
No, I, I, no, it shows muted.
Oh, okay, you are, you're muted there, William. Now you're unmuted. You're rustling. Still no voice coming through there, William.
William, it's gonna be star, isn't it star six, star six to unmute?
Yeah, star six to unmute, which now he's muted again. Oh, he's unmuted now, uh, William, you're gonna just call my phone and then you can, I can put it on? You can use that.
Are you calling me, William, too?
Alright, you are on, okay, we're looking for a second to the, uh, motion, uh, the minute, to approve the minute. Okay, I have a second from, uh, Mr. Montgomery, alright, um, moving forward, what we have is a variance request, it's an accessory building, uh, accessory building square footage variance, it's a four oh one Cypress Court, the petitioner is Wayne and Marcia Taylor, at this time I might be open the, um, open it up for public comment, and, uh, anybody wants to speak to the issue? Is Wayne or Marcia Taylor out there? See Wayne Taylor, yeah, unmute, I see a Wayne Taylor, you wanna unmute your, uh, phone? There you go.
Alright.
Perfect. We can hear you.
Okay.
So, you wanna speak to the issue of why you need a variance for, uh, square footage of, on this lot?
Yeah, we're just being a little, uh, larger than anticipated, twenty-six by thirty.
Okay, um, is, uh, Jimmy on the line, or anybody from the city, did you hear?
Listen.
Hi, I'm Mark. Mark, can you hear me?
Uh, yeah, is that William?
Mark, it's Jim Oakley.
Okay, Jimmy, okay, go ahead.
Yes, uh, the city don't have no issues with this, it meets the, uh, square footage as far as the amount of building you can build on a lot, they got extremely large lots, it would not, everything's good with that, it's good, it, it gets exceeded, slightly exceeded the maximum square footage of six hundred and fifty square feet, so, um, I'd recommend Board of Adjustments pass it.
Okay, excellent, so, uh, Mr. Rupel, Mr. Montgomery, did you get all that, what, uh, Jimmy said?
Yes, sir.
City's okay with that. Alright, um, I'll close the public hearing at this time, unless there's anybody else who wants to speak to or against it. I don't hear anybody, okay, so, close the public hearing at this time, I'd entertain a motion, um,
Make a, make a motion to approve the, uh, variance at four oh one Cypress Court.
Four oh two.
I'm sorry, four oh four, it was a typo in my, uh, agenda. Four oh four, did you get that, Miss Susan?
Yes, sir, sir.
Okay, it said, I, I was reading four oh one, yeah, I'd make a motion to approve the maximum square footage, or to approve the square footage variance petition by Wayne and Marcie Taylor at four oh four Cypress Court.
Okay, we, we cleared the square footage variance at four oh four Cypress Court, um, you have a second? Um, I believe it's a single story, uh, oh, Jimmy, or is it a single story, uh, Billy?
Yes, sir, it is, single story.
Okay, single story there, William. Good call. Okay, I have a second now for, uh, building square footage variance at four oh four Cypress Court, all of the members say aye.
Aye.
And there are no hugs, okay, well, this, uh, variance passed, thank you very much for your time, um, at this particular time, I just entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second, have a second, okay, all of the members say aye.
Aye.
Alright, this meeting's adjourned, thanks very much for your time.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
So, we don't have a, we don't have.
Talking Wayne Taylor. Trying to get her touch with me.
What's she on?
She's talking Wayne Taylor. I do.
She said meeting was adjourned.
It don't matter, we still, oh, no. Yeah, they don't get a chance.
Never get a chance to do what, honey?
No. Couldn't give them some more information.
I don't see what's there.
I don't leave now. I don't know why you did that.
Yeah, Marcel, I see you.
You could get off.
Maybe they can't.
I know, I said could get off. I know, I said could get off.
We do not have anyone else in the waiting room as of yet.
Well, I saw your mic mute there, William, so we set order, it's working. Now you might just unmute it. Ah, there it goes. Hello, Commissioner Twitty. Hey Susan, can you hear me? Susan? Susan?
Yes.
Billy Hall's at the front door, could you let him in?
Yes.
I hear you.
Don't worry, I got it. I'll show her.
No, no. Commissioner Hall, you can be in charge and I'll be your backup. There you go. Okay.
I got it, it's on here, babe.
Hey.
Marking up my babe.
Is it working? You are working. Commissioner Montgomery? Alright, good deal, you're on. Oh, well, you were, it just went away.
And one more commission if they're calling.
Fine. Well, lucky to get Commissioner Twitty there because it looked like he's been out mowing the yard.
Yeah.
Well, Jimmy's on his way to baseball to be racist. Oh, is it? We don't normally go, but I started out together. We've got, yeah, William was there a minute ago and it just went away. This block is open, not working.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you and we can see you.
Perfect. I've been sweating, sorry.
No, no, I was gonna say, we probably caught you right after mowing the yard. They should not smell of Asian. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. I thought it was all them, otherwise I would've came down.
Yeah. Is that you, William?
Yes, I'm here.
Alright, good, you're on solid.
Yes.
So, right now, we've got Commissioner Montgomery, Commissioner Twitty, and Commissioner Hall.
Yes, I'm leaving Dan Ryan, I do not believe for my kids.
Parker Bowlen's phone looks like he's connecting right now.
There it is, Dr. B's phone. He is on. That was the one unmuted.
From Doctor B. Aaron is on, hey, welcome, Aaron.
I'm here, thank you.
No, it's just, I think that's Commissioner Bowlen's phone. Commissioner Montgomery, Commissioner Bowlen, could you go ahead and mute your phones? Do we call over here a little bit? I hope we don't have the same problem with the... Well, I think it just dropped out. Bowlen, Commissioner Bowlen. The, it was unmuted, but he could hear, it's kind of like what Commissioner Montgomery wants to give me. Okay. Yeah. Let me ask, yo, good, you're there, Commissioner Bowlen's now there, looking dapper. And I was wondering if Commissioner Montgomery's still there?
Montgomery's there.
Well, that's the blank screen that he couldn't talk on before.
I'm here, Mark.
Okay, good, alright, he's on the phone up there, okay? Alright, so it's looking like we may have a call.
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to, yep, I'm gonna call the Jacksonville Mining Commission meeting to order, August 20, 2020. It's a little after seven. And this time, for opening remarks, and while everybody, we may have some more commissioners coming in, I just want to say that, Commissioners, Commissioner Sykes has resigned. He was a great commissioner and a great person. And he'll be missed on this board because I think he had a great steady hand. Loved his calming type demeanor, and he always had a positive attitude about everything, so. Commissioner Sykes is going to be sorely missed. City Council, just earlier, appointed Mike Dietz to fill his spot, he'll have the remainder of his spot here. So, that's just some information for everybody here. Trying to get Commissioner Dietz to come over, but I just probably didn't get any text in time. So, if anybody available here, Commissioners, would, being as Commissioner Sykes was on the Board of Adjustment, we need a volunteer from the group here for somebody to fill this slot. We volunteer, William Montgomery's already on. That just means, yeah, you hit the button there, Greg, I just know you're leaning forward into it, but anyway, that was, it's either Commissioner Twitty, Bowlen, or Hall, wanna be on the Board of Adjustment.
I've already served out there.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Jeff has already served.
Commissioner Hall, have any interest in going to the Board of Adjustment?
I will, I will.
Okay. Alright, thank you very much. Alright, Commissioner Hall has graciously volunteered to fill the slot of Commissioner Sykes, thank you everybody for tuning out. This time, let's just open a word of prayer. Our holy fathers, we bow before you, we just ask that justice for the city is done in an honorable way, Father, that you just can, you conduct this, Father, just give us the grace and glory that you always have, we ask it on the Christmas Eve, you just now, give me. At this time, let's call Hall.
Commissioner Montgomery?
Here.
Commissioner Hall? Commissioner Britton, she is absent, she has school tonight. Commissioner Twitty?
Here.
Commissioner Brown? Commissioner Bowlen? Commissioner Bowlen?
Great.
I see.
I'm muted.
You answered. And Chairman Stroud, I have two absences, sir.
Alright, okay, so we have a forum. Everybody look at your agenda, item number three is approval into our correction of amendments, does everybody have time to vote in the minutes for any input? Any corrections or additions? If you're in none, I would entertain a motion to approve the amendments that submitted.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, have a motion to approve in many seconds, that's awesome. All in favor say aye.
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 Any votes? And there are none? Okay, so this opens the public hearing section, item number four, it's for conditional use. It'll be for 3125 North First Street, the commissioner is Sean O'Dell. And at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing for a comment as to this conditional use. Aaron? Is this not Aaron? Oh, this is with, or in case of this, right? Okay, Mr. O'Dell, you want to speak to what exactly you want us to do here?
What my plan is, is just to build some more townhomes like I have at 3101 North First Street.
In our packet, the one you're talking about, 3101, that's the one opposite of the one that you're talking about on this map that, it says Zone C2 with conditional use for all the families, is that the one you're talking about?
Yes.
So you're gonna build apartments kind of like that over onto this other parcel?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the Commissioners this time?
Like, how many apartments is it gonna be per location?
The new project, I'm planning on putting nine units, three threeplexes.
And how many you have now? I have not drove by that area this week.
I've got, I've got nineteen, I've got five threeplexes and one fourplex. I've got nineteen units at 3101.
Thank you, Sean.
And they look nice once it's there now, fit in, but what's there, this is really run down, I'm there now, so I think it'll be an improvement. Alright, alright. Does the city have any input this time?
No, I do not, I don't see any issue with the city on this project.
Okay, alright, I do have a question. The threeplexes, so that's kind of like cutting in half what you had on that one, because it shows six there. And, okay?
Yeah, that property's half the size.
Correct, okay. We, are we gonna have a single driveway, or is it going to be a driveway per complex?
Yeah, I'm gonna face the street to the north. So, yeah, it'll just turn right off of the, whatever that street is, it turns off of North First Street.
Okay, Wolford?
Yes.
So you have one ingress, ingress, cut to that road going into the threeplexes there, right?
Yes.
Okay. Then you wouldn't have any problems with us putting that into part of the conditional use, would you be about making sure that it's just one road cut there?
I don't, I don't guess, what you mean by one road cut?
Well, one driveway to take care of all three of those apartment complexes onto Wolford Road and not off of North First Street.
Yeah, I wouldn't, yeah, I wouldn't put one off of North First Street, they'd all, you know, I would, go the whole length of the property on Wolford, for the, for the parking lot.
Okay, alright.
Does that make sense?
Yes, you're dust, parking lot is fine, I was just making sure that we didn't have like a parking lot that just, cut in from the whole length of the property, you know, just make one input and output where you can turn in and out of.
Right.
Alright, is, at this time, is there anybody else to speak against this? Or anybody to speak against this at this time? Okay, if there's more input, can I close the public hearing at this time? Commissioners, do you have any more input or thoughts on this?
Is Mr. Oakley, is he on the phone, Mark?
Yeah, Mr. Oakley, yeah, he spoke to it just a little bit ago.
Yeah, okay. My question is, what about the fire hydrant, would that take for those duplexes as well?
Okay, Jimmy, did you hear what he said? Okay Jimmy, did you hear what he said? Oh, he's got it now. You're in the heels. Okay, Melissa's on the line, maybe Melissa can take that.
I am on the line, we haven't looked at a site plan review at this point, he's just asking for the conditional use to be consistent with what he already has previously built that he mentioned. So, he wouldn't be able to get a site plan approved without proper fire protection, so yes, that would look at.
Okay, thanks Melissa.
You're welcome.
Alright.
There is a fire hydrant directly across the street.
On Wolford, across the street, okay.
Yeah, there is a fire hydrant directly across the street.
Thanks Sean.
Alright, is a few more comment, questions from the Commissioners? Okay, I entertain a motion, we encourage also in the motion, just to make sure that we just had the one road cut to supply this whole property.
I make a motion, Mark, for the location of 3125 North First Street here in Jacksonville to approve the reclassification of the property.
Actually, what it is, it's gonna stay a C2, so what?
Yes sir, C2 to a C2, yes sir.
Right, so it stays a C2, but what we're doing, we're giving them a conditional use, so the motion would be about allowing a conditional use with only one road, one curb cut for access to the property, that would be kind of getting it nutshell.
Well, I make a motion to approve, Mark.
Okay, as we just stated it, that'll, okay, alright, sir, and I have a second from Commissioner Hall, any discussion? If there are no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, and is there any opposed? Seeing none, okay, move on now, the next item on the agenda will be request or proof plats. You'll notice item lowercase a, preliminary plat for SAM settlement, that has been removed from our agenda. We'll be talking about that, and I hope everybody here got an email, we're going to have a special meeting come Wednesday to talk about this, Wednesday, you didn't get, okay. Okay. Before we move on, let's make sure we got this all cleared, alright, Melissa, did everybody get back with you on the email about the meeting on Wednesday?
I, I did hear back from most people, I'll check, I'll touch base with the rest of them tomorrow.
We're going to conduct a special meeting outside of our regular meeting.
This is just a review meeting, there's a few questions on SAM settlement, and this is just to answer some questions.
Okay, so this is not a planning condition meeting that you're talking about, right?
Not, no.
Alright, then I got it wrong, my bad, okay. Okay, so it will be just reviewed then, so, I guess that'll be a meeting for me to take care of, but anyway, it's been removed from the agenda. And we'll talk about it going forward, alright, then we'll move on to item number B, which is a final plat now, then Commissioners, you know that a final plat is when you give the keys to the youngster, they get in the car and they drive away. So, we need to make sure that all production in a row, this is for final plat, Jackson Terrace Phase 14A, Commissioner is Richard Jones, represented by Bond Engineering. At this time, Mr. Robinson, I guess you wanna speak to this issue?
Yes, sir. So this is the next phase 14A of Jackson Terrace. This has been a very thriving subdivision in the city. And basically, this is just another phase, it was approved, I think, back in February. The sewer has been approved by the Sewer Department, the water, as builds have been turned in, we're waiting on the contractor to get us our letter of warranty and release of liens. He's went back and adjusted all the meters, so once we get his two final documents, we should have approval from the Water Department. The base material has been installed, and it has been set up, asphalt is scheduled for Monday or Tuesday of next week, we will have to do a roll test with the city before we do our asphalt. It's my understanding from Mr. Oakley that he has money with the city for a bond on the asphalt. And, other than that, everything else that's on the, on the checklist that Melissa sent is, you know, it's just grammatical, or it's adding notations, or stuff that's pretty simple and will be taken care of before we ask the chairman to sign off on it.
Alright, so yeah, you're talking about things like the half the sidewalks, not in that scale, you're talking about stuff like that?
Well, yeah, like we copied the numbers from the last phase, and it was on, the numbers on this phase are actually on the other side of the street, so I've actually already renumbered all those. I've changed the zoning from R1 to R0, I have changed one lot where we have a seventy foot building line now, as opposed to a six, it was a like sixty-two foot building line. I think those are the major items that were really on it, the rest of them were like the bill of assurance, changing the bill of assurance to reflect the same thing, and R0 as opposed to an R1. There were some grammatical that said Phase 13 as opposed to Phase 14A, those have all been corrected. So it's really just minute technical issues that are easily worked through with us and Public Works.
Alright, so the, but the, right now, we're, we're not at, the water doesn't have the paperwork to give a final inspection because the contractor hasn't turned in his paperwork yet?
The city's done their inspection, and then Brett actually, with Brett with Jacksonville Water actually does a twelve month inspection, actually it's around eleven months, and he goes through and checks everything at eleven months before the warranty is up to make the contractor come back and set any meters or fix anything that needs to be fixed, so he does a preliminary inspection just to make sure that all the meter heights are right, make sure all the fire hydrants are at the right height, and then then he comes back eleven months to make sure everything is still good, that contractor doesn't have to fix anything. So he, the water's been tested, that's passed all of its back tea tests, it's on, it's actually what we've, you know, it's hot, it's ready to use. The contractors, we've done the as-built, Brett with the Water Department's already reviewed them, he had me change a few things, which we worked on today for him. So I mean, it's, it's really technical issue is all it is, but the main thing that I think the city really is, you know, trying to make sure that we have done is the asphalt, and then the con, the developer always puts up money with the city on the sidewalks. So, so it's those two, I mean, it's those two things, it's the asphalt and the sidewalk are the two biggies.
Okay, Melissa, you, did you catch all that, because I've got a long list here, and I was trying to check it off as Aaron's going through them, did you kinda go through the checklist and is everything, or what are we waiting for?
We're, we're in good shape, Mark, and I got some revisions from Aaron, and he's, he's correct, he's hit all the high points, there's a couple little little measly things that is no big deal, we can get those corrected prior to recording. The asphalt is scheduled to be laid, we're in good shape.
Great, excellent news, okay, so what we would be doing then would be, well, I see, once it leaves our hand, it's a done deal, because City Council has already approved condition, or approval. So, we're, we can approve it with contingent upon whatever you wanted to do it, Commissioners, but just know that this is truly the final say of this plat, and we will be handing the keys over, so are there any questions from the Commissioners at this time?
Yeah, this is Jeff, so we're just saying basically, everything is done except the asphalt's not down, it's gonna be put in next week maybe, and I guess I'll put in some grass seed.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
That's, that's all that's missing right now, okay.
And, and I mean, just to be clear, the sidewalk is not done as well, I mean, those are the sidewalk and the asphalt, and he puts up money for the sidewalk.
Curb and guttering, all that someplace?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And we're good with the water, and we're good with the sewer, right?
Other than, other than my contractor has to give a one-year warranty and a release of liens.
Okay, so the list would be having the contractor sign off, so that water can sign off. And the sidewalk is what we asked for, is that a list that we have so far, I mean, is that it?
Hey, you broke it in and out, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, so right now, what we still have is outstanding for water because of a contractor, we have sidewalks and we have asphalt to be laid. And a couple of things are the contingencies that we would be putting into the motion for this thing to be granted, right?
I think the, yeah, Melissa can, I guess, speak to it, but I think the only contingency is just water approval, because he has to put up a bond for the asphalt and the sidewalk.
Is that right, Melissa?
I'm sorry, struggling with my microphone, yes, that is correct.
So Commissioners, the only contingency that we have off this list would be, left would be that water sign off.
Water, yeah.
So you just, just make sure that we put that into the motion. Oh, we've got that, alright, so Commissioners, I entertain a motion, or if there's any other discussion before we add the motion. Alright, hearing none, I entertain a motion for the final plat at Jackson Terrace Phase 14A.
Okay, I make a motion to accept the final plat of Jackson Terrace 14A with the contingency that the water is installed.
Or signed off.
Signed on, yes.
Alright, do you, do I have a second?
Hey Mark, I second that motion, it's William.
Second's a motion, alright, again, one last time, is there any discussion on the motion? So, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, do I have any opposed? And there is no opposition, alright, thank you very much, Aaron, for your time. Commissioners, I want to thank you all for your time too, we don't have any building permits, and this looks like the end of the agenda today. Again, thank you, Commissioner Hall, for standing out there with the Board of Adjustment. Okay, this time I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, do I have a second?
Take it.
Alright, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all for adjourn.